We need.
Welcome, everybody. Today is Monday, November 18th. It's a regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. I'll request the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Scalati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. Invite the city attorney to report out on a closed session that was held prior to this meeting.
Thank you. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. So, welcome to the meeting this evening, whether you're here in person or watching online. We always like to start with a big dose of gratitude to our staff that enables the city to run so beautifully every single day. And a special shout out and appreciation, as last week, the city manager and I recognized the team of the quarter for 2024 Q3, which was the San Rafael Police Department Patrol Team Two. The team includes Thomas Collins, Brian Patterson, Sebastian Sanchez, Edgar Rodriguez, Justin Schrader, and Sylvia Gramajo. So, thank you to all of them. Their nominators said that Patrol Team Two prioritized community safety and demonstrated strong dedication to serving the San Rafael community by working additional hours and putting community needs above personal commitments. So, big gratitude to Patrol Team Two and all the officers that do incredible work at keeping our community safe every single day. So, it's always a pleasure to recognize the great employees that we have here in the city. Since our last council meeting, the election for offices and ballot measures at the federal, state, county, and local level have occurred. Later during the city manager report, our city clerk will provide an update on local San Rafael-specific items, because we know people are interested in that. And then finally, as you know, as part of the opening remarks, we include a land acknowledgement, in addition to the work that we do on a regular basis with the tribe. One of those items was going to be the unveiling of a beautiful new mural at the Alborro Center on Friday. But being that massive rainstorms are forecast, it is being postponed to later in December. But we will include the landing acknowledgement right now. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. And we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. I will turn to the city clerk to describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public. Wishing to provide public comment displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this evening's meeting. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. And if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsanfavel.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with the city manager and council member reports. I'll turn it over to city manager Alilovich.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I wanted to start with introducing you to a new employee. He's in the audience. Greg Minor is the new assistant director of community and economic development, so we welcome him to his first city council meeting. He's been here a couple of weeks.
Welcome.
An update on the storms. We got word from PG&E today that they're forecasting atmospheric river. So, we're looking at some pretty severe storms, adverse weather and outage activities later Tuesday through Friday. So, winds 45 to 70 miles an hour were one of the counties that they're predicting is going to have the biggest impact. So, they're putting crews out there to try to respond to power outages and downlines. And I know our Public Works team has been out there furiously trying to make sure the storm drains are clean and prepare for the storms. So, but we should, and they are saying to expect outages, so prepare for that with generators or whatever else you need to do for that. And then, also Public Works, I just wanted to mention, as they're out there, just a reminder to compost your leaves and and have them not, you know, put them in your green bins and help us make sure the drains are clean. So, we've got some tips on our website, cityofsanfavel.org/storms for some good info on how to prepare for the storms. Also, the SMART has a strategic plan out for public comment, so that there's a draft of their 2520, 2025-2030 strategic plan. You can give your feedback. There's a website link here. And I think it's already on the city's website as well, just to redirect folks to provide their input on that important regional transportation plan. I was going to mention the canceled events as well. So, due to the storm, additionally, SMART was going to have a grand opening at the pathway that connects McGinnis Parkway and Smith Ranch Road, and that is also being rescheduled due to the rain. I wanted to mention, speaking of that area, the county has an exhibit called "I Will Not Be Forgotten: The Dignity of Homelessness" by San Rafael photographer Lea Del Hommo, which is at the Marin County Civic Center. I've heard it's amazing. I haven't gone yet. I'm going to take the kids. Showcasing stories of those individuals experiencing homelessness. It's on display until January 20, January 31st. So, it's a really inspiring stories. Holiday events, we've got a ton of stuff going on for the holidays. So, the annual holiday of lights and winter wonderland and shop small business Saturday is November 30th from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There'll be food trucks, live entertainment, holiday tree lighting is at 5:30, and I believe our own council member, Yaren Scalati, is going to be lighting the tree this year. Also, on that day, there's an unveiling of a public art. It's called Civic Wave. It's an installation at 1001 Fourth Street, and that's around 5:00 o'clock-ish. They're going to be doing a little special reveal. The third annual Great Downtown San Rafael Elf Hunt is back. This is a Chamber BID event from November 30th to January 6th. You can get a map, I guess, at Mike's Bikes, and you can win gift baskets of local goodies up to $200. You have to find elves all around downtown. Also, I wanted to mention the Santa Cop program is started actually today. We're collecting new unwrapped toys and non-perishable food at fire stations and the public safety center across the way. On Saturday, December 7th, from 1:00 to 3:00, Santa will be visiting the kids at West End Nursery, arriving aboard the Fire Engine 51. So, that'll be really fun. If you want more information about Santa Cop, it's s-r-santa-cop@gmail.com. And then, finally, the menorah lighting and gelt drop is going to be on Sunday, December 29th, from 5:00 to 6:30 at the Downtown Plaza. And I believe councilmember Kurtz is going to be doing the lighting of the menorah there. Lots of fun, music, dancing, chocolate, of course, with the gelt drop. And they're asking for a non-perishable food item to be brought to contribute to the Marin San Francisco Food Bank. Last but not least, before I turn it over to the city clerk to provide an update on local election results, I wanted to congratulate our very own Mayor Kate, councilmember Kurtz, councilmember Yaren Scalati, city attorney Rob Epstein, and city clerk Lindsay Lara for new terms and unofficial results, but very excited to have all of you. Unofficial, early congratulations. The swearing-in will occur once the, you know, the elections office certifies. So, it'll either be at the next council meeting, December 2nd, or on December 16th. So, I'll turn it over to our esteemed city clerk.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. I love that Christine is expressing that it's unofficial, because I'm constantly pushing that on all staff, is that these are the unofficial results. But I wanted to provide a brief update on where we stand as of now on the election. As of today, at 2:00 p.m., we have a countywide voter turnout of about 83.69%. And as Christine Alilovich just reported, congratulations, Mayor Kate and councilmember Kurtz, as well as Micah Yaren Scalati. Mayor Kate's leading with 86% of the vote. District Four councilmember Rachel Kurtz, excuse me, is leading with 81% of the vote. District One councilmember Micah Yaren Scalati is leading with 100% of the vote, also unopposed. As well as city attorney Robert Epstein, myself, Lindsay Lara, city clerk, have 100% of the vote and are unopposed. Measure P is passing with 51% of the votes in favor. And Marin County Board of Supervisors, District Two seat, Brian Colbert leads with 51% of the vote. And Marin Municipal Water District Division Two, Diana Meyer, leading with 37% of the vote. You can continue looking online. If you just go to Google and type in Marin County election results, it'll take you right there. And I'm constantly refreshing that page and checking for updates for our county elections. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good turnout, 83%. Yep, thank you.
I must add also, that's just so far. They're still counting, so we expect to see more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that report. I'll turn to my council members for their reports, to meetings that they have attended as representatives of San Rafael. I will start with the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have two meetings to report out on Tuesday, November 12th. I attended the Finance Subcommittee with Mayor Kate and Director Navasio. Most of what we discussed is in the agenda tonight, so we will, I will save my comments and we'll do that publicly. But I will give a hint. There was one discussion around the AA+ bond rating the city has received. It's good news. It's an incremental increase from our AA. So, we'll talk about that during that item. And then, on Wednesday, November 13th, was the Arbor Day Celebration, which I attended with Mayor Kate and councilmember Yaren Scalati, as well as Director Kufa of Library and Recreation and Director Miller of Public Works, as well as all a bunch of staff from those departments. We received a wonderful speech, not only from Mayor Kate, which was great, but also, and I can't remember who gave it, but it was around stumps, which I thought was really amazing and why stump speeches became the way they are. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. Let's see, had the MWPA, Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, Exec Meeting, and the Finance Committee Meeting. And this week, I believe, we will have the board meeting. So, those are all public meetings. We had the homeless community group meeting. Mayor Kate and I both attended. Thank you to the staff for providing that and to the whole community who came. There were, I think we had 30, about 30 people, who attended to help to learn more about our homeless and what we're doing and what can be done and other thoughts and ideas. And I believe there'll be two more meetings around that. The, we had the city schools meeting with Mayor Kate, and I attended that. I am on the county's Priority Setting Committee. This is where we have funds that are available from state and county, and different organizations apply for these funds. And there's representation from across the county. So, Supervisor Luca and I both chair that meeting. And today, I helped at Seeds of Hope, and thank you to Lynn Murphy and all, and all the community and service providers who provide so many services during that event. And the next one will be on February 10th.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Last week, I attended the board meeting of the San Rafael Sanitation District. We continued working on our strategic plan. On the mayor and I comprise two-thirds of that, more than a sixth of that board. And our strategic plan at a high level is to reorganize the entity from which we receive our staffing. We currently receive staffing services from the city of San Rafael. Our operational consolidation step towards operational consolidation is to obtain those services from the Central Marin Sanitation Agency, a JPA to which the sanitation district belongs. So, we continued work on that and are hopeful that the multitude of issues can be resolved probably over the next six months, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Scalati.
Thank you, mayor. On November 5th, I went to the Mission District in San Francisco with Cana Alliance and Marin Promise. And we were learning about the Mission Promise Neighborhood, the Visit and the Impact Tour. So, there's a nonprofit organization in collaboration with the city and county of San Francisco, where they started serving 100 people. Now, they serve 20,000 people. It was very interesting to learn about how they have, they have been able to get more housing in the Mission District with mixed uses, with commercial use on the bottom. And they have like different services. One of them, they offer business loans to, to the merchants that they are like on the bottom part of their buildings. And what's really interesting is that the business loans are like 98% prepaid, because they require them to be involved and use their technical assistance. So, they are clients. And at the same time, they are supporting these commercial businesses. And they also, the merchants, they also live in, in the apartments that they have around the Mission. So, anyway, is this really great way to expand the neighborhood? And they also have programs for promotoras, but it's not the promotoras that we are used to. I mean, it is similar, but they actually are an independent organization. They are a cooperative. So, where the promotoras not only are earning their hourly wage, but also they are getting some of the benefits from the organization. So, anyway, they're, they're like a different way of thinking, so I really look forward to connecting this organization, you know, with our city and see where can we pick up their brains. Anyway, that was very interesting. November 6th, I had an MC Clean Energy Executive Committee meeting. And that evening, it was right after the election, so it was really nice to be in community at the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, November Mixer at United Markets. Mayor Kate was there. And it was, United Markets is amazing. I got a behind-the-scenes tour. I've been a customer for like 26 years, but I've never been behind the scenes. And it was very interesting. So, Kelly Smith is the owner who gave us the tour. And I don't know if you know, they were established in 1955, so it's a great business. They have over 30,000 individual products in the store, deal with 350 vendors, if you can imagine that. And many of those vendors are local. And what is really cool is that they actually use entrepreneurs, that they have a great new product, but they haven't marketed yet. So, they are kind of like mentoring them to put the product in there. So, anyway, we are very lucky to have them, and please support them. They are, they have the best fish as well. Anyway, November 13th, it was Arbor Day Celebration. So, in addition to what you reported, I was really happy to be with different departments. I love to see Public Works and how much they love trees and what they do. So, just like a little Greek proverb, "A society grows great when all men and women plant trees in whose shade they will never sit." So, I thought that was really cool. And a couple more. November 14th, it was the update from TAM, Transportation Authority of Marine, around the US 101 580 multimodal and local access improvement projects. It was very well-attended, and there was definitely many comments from the public. So, I look forward to continue the improvements on BLM and around pedestrians and bike lanes and runabouts and all that. So, it's very interesting. And then, finally, I had that night proclamation. I represented the council with the San Rafael, San Rafael Marine Evening Rotary Club. They were actually merging two different rotary clubs, the San Rafael Evening Club and the Marine Evening Club. And so, combined, they were celebrating 50 years, and I think it's such a great vision to bring both clubs together, to do more great work for the community. And actually, the last one, on Saturday, it was the, around the area for like kink tights. So, I went to the path in the canal to walk around the area and see how kink tights is affecting us. So, more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just close out the reports. I had the honor of speaking at a different Daisy Troop from the one that I spoke to two weeks ago, learning about civic, the civic life. They were even squirrelier than the other one. So, but it was great. It was great that they were interested, and they did make them really nice posters. So, that was very cool. I was able to attend two ribbon cuttings. One is, one was with North Bay Candle Works. They're over, located on Lincoln, kind of behind Sprouts. And the owner, it's his side gig, because he's also an ER nurse. And these candles are amazing, and they have a little store right out in front, or in the front part of their building. So, great to have a ribbon cutting. They've been in business, but they hadn't had the ribbon cutting part. So, it was a celebration. And the other ribbon cutting was at 8:00 a.m., and it was with the Marin Community Clinic's Dental Clinic. Yes, that was a thing. I was very happy I was not there to get my teeth cleaned, and they do offer those services to adults in our community. And it's nice, because Marin Community Clinics is located both in the canal and now in the heart of our downtown. It's on Fourth Street, right across from where the Shakespeare Theater is. So, really great location. And it's fantastic to see Marin Community Clinics and the number of folks that they serve in our community every single day. And Supervisor Sackett was there, and both she and I were able to say a few words. And then, finally, chatted with Senator Maguire. He was in town, and he just wanted an update on what we are doing with the funds around Mahone Path, which is encampment resolution funds that we are, we had co-applied for with the county. So, we gave him an update on that, and hopefully, he'll continue. No, he will continue to advocate at the state level for additional funds, provided that the state funding budget allows that in the years ahead. So, it was great that he came by. And there will be a tour that the city will be providing to the senator in a week or two. Yes, ACM's fancy is nodding his head. So, so Maguire able to see how those funds are being put to use. So, as always, very appreciative of city managers' report, city clerk chiming in, and my colleagues, what they do every single day outside of the dais work. Before we go to the consent agenda, I will accept any comments on the public from the reports that you just heard. If you're interested, this would be your time. Right. So, any of the, yep, so any of the reports you just heard. And if you're invited, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Hi. Good evening. Shinji Sakayagi. Live over by McGinnis Park. Thank you for your continued service. It's very motivating. Keeps people like us coming back. So, it's wonderful. Thank you. Just to speak a little bit about that new SMART pathway, that where we were supposed to have the ribbon cutting for this Friday, but, you know, it got canceled or postponed due to the rain. I hear the asphalt will be finished tomorrow and will be dry by Wednesday. Of course, it won't be very dry on Wednesday, but, you know, it's, we might not have the ribbon cutting, but it is going to be available for our Smith Ranch community. When I rode out, out here today, I took Old Rutterwood Highway to the Civic Center, and that will probably be the last time I do that. And this will be life-changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, city council. It's nice to see you again. I just had two comments. One, and I wanted to echo on United Markets. They, if you remember, we've had fires and floods, and the big-name stores, the fancy ones that have the high prices, they were closed, but in United Markets was open and available every time. And I shopped there religiously for that reason, to support them, because they support us when we need it the most. One. And the other was, a comment was on the possibility of outages per the winds and PG&E's necessity to shut down electricity. I'm wondering if the city is providing any safety shelters in the event that there is a prolonged outage or a flood? So, that's really my only two comments.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Not seen any. I'll close a public comment and ask the city manager to respond to what services will be available.
Sure. I don't think we predict an activation of our emergency operations center just based on the current predictions. But if there, if it were to be the case, if there were a flood or prolonged situation, we would have that activation. And there's a whole bunch of protocols about communication and shelter and all kinds of other services. So, that would be well-distributed if, if and when we get into that situation.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar. Are there any items to be removed? Not seeing any. I would welcome public comments on the consent agendas. This is item 4A through 4E. If you would like to comment, now is your opportunity. Not seeing anyone. I will bring it back for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is, or the next item on our agenda is fiscal year 2425 First Quarter Budget Update. I see Director Navasio has joined us. Welcome.
Thank you very much, mayor, members of the council. Yes, the first item is our, as noted, the First Quarter Budget Update. This is hopefully becoming a routine item, more or less, to provide the council and the public with periodic updates on the, basically, revenue and expenditures over the course of the fiscal year in relation to our approved budget. I'll just summarize that most of fiscal information is provided in the attachment to the report, where we show the revenue where we show the revenues collected, uh, in this case through the accounting period ending September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty five. And um, uh, revenues collected of about twenty seven million against a budget of a hundred ninety five million. So about fif- fourteen percent of the um fiscal year revenues, uh, on the expenditures. Um, the expenditures were forty eight point five million dollars um, through the first uh, quarter. When combined with encumbrances, it's about thirty two percent, uh, excuse me, thirty four percent of the budget. Um, the encumbrances merely reflect contracts and purchase orders that have been let, so not yet paid, but commitments essentially of uh, city funds against those budgets. The report goes on to um, highlight the uh, results within the general fund, where uh, we received about eight point three percent, uh, eight point six million dollars of revenues. Uh, they tend to lag the um, sort of timing through the fiscal year because of the delay in property and sales tax receipts that um, received quarterly, uh, not necessarily within the, the accounting period, but uh, they seem to be tracking on um, budget. Uh, we then cover the expenditures through the first quarter of the fiscal year. Um, about thirty percent of the general fund expended at three million against the budget of a hundred and twelve point five. Again, that also reflects the number of uh, encumbrances. Um, so money not yet out the door, but contractual, contractual commitments, uh, things like our contracts with the county general services for animal control, some of the homeless service contracts that are in place. Um, and then we provide more detailed report um, uh, in tables seven and eight of these attachments relative to a- all the specific funds. So we're providing a little bit more information. Um, sometimes it could be too much information, but it allows, again, the council and the public to track our progress. Um, I will note that when we present a mid-year budget update, typically uh, second meeting in February, we will also be providing updated revenue and expenditure projections uh, through the end of the fiscal year to, to not just uh, report a point in time result, but where the trends are heading. We tend not to do that in the first quarter because the year is still relatively young. And as we like to say, one data point does not a trend make. But as we um, get through the next few accounting periods and through the mid-year, we'll be able to update our projections um, through the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the other thing that I would note is the um, second part of this report, which is um, just a recommendation. Um, and the detail is in attachment B. The um, council adopted the current fiscal year budget at their meeting on June seventeenth, representing uh, kind of the new appropriations uh, for this fiscal year. Um, that was about a hundred and, I'm sorry, two hundred and eleven point one million on an all funds basis. Um, since the beginning of the fiscal year, per the authority granted by the council in your uh, resolution adopting the budget, um, staff was granted authority to carry over, as we said, uh, encumbrances. In other words, appropriations that were encumbered through contracts and purchase orders, um, where we hadn't yet received invoices or made payment at the end of June. So those rolled into this fiscal year in order to accommodate that. Um, what is included in this uh, report in attachment B is a recommendation um, for the council to authorize um, supplemental appropriations of one million eighty thousand one hundred and forty eight uh, across a number of funds that summarize both in the staff report and in the attachment. What this represents is um, funding that was provided in the prior year budget for specific purposes, but for which at year end, we did not have, we didn't spend the money, nor did we have a purchase order um, or contract that encumbered those dollars. Yet those funds are still um, potentially needed for the, for, for the purpose intended. And we enumerate those. Um, the, the bulk of it is our vehicle replacement fund for vehicles that were planned for replacement in last fiscal year, but um, um, either the order wasn't placed or the invoices weren't received. Another um, uh, portion of this recommendation is in our um, um, grants fund, particularly in the um, Little Mod Housing Fund for uh, funding that is used for the city to um, uh, for contracts to administer our below market rate um, rental and um, ownership units. So uh, they're summarized in the report. Um, so I'm just, I'll wrap up to take any questions you have on the first quarter report. Um, but also uh, again, recommend that the council um, authorize the supplemental budget appropriation listed as a second recommendation in your staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. See if there are additional questions. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Director Navasio, for the, the readout. Uh, just out of curiosity, as I actually appreciate the pattern going forward that we would receive these quarterly updates. Do you anticipate that we would see these unencumbered carryovers annually? Or is this uh, just a one, a one-off that we'll receive a report on unencumbered carryovers?
Excuse me. Um, normally, uh, the unencumbered carryover, uh, pending feedback from the council and our internal discussions, but typically only the um, in front of you is part of these first um, quarter budget update. What we want to avoid is, is come to you on any given Monday night with a carryover appropriation, you know, when we're doing the transactions, but we're, it's, it's part of the year-end close. We wrap everything up and then put a bow on it so that we're not. Um, that doesn't mean that there may not be other budget amendments that come to you during the course of the year or in the mid-year budget, but that would typically be, you know, for new money, new appropriations. This is cleanup, if you will, for the fiscal year.
Thank you for that. And I think where I'm going with it is I appreciate the level of detail and frequency. I think this is something that, you know, for the most part, we've not done prior to this level of detail. So I appreciate the, the call out that this comes before the council just to keep us informed. These are carryovers, these are monies that are intended to be spent and they are continuing to, intended to be spent, but we're just making certain, recalling that out is what I'm taking away from the, from the readout. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Oh yeah, Councilmember Bushy.
Yes, I'm uh, delighted to follow on that, because of the, um, Vice Mayor. Um, the additional data that is available here is um, very interesting. Um, however, it would be more helpful to me on, and I think maybe the, um, a- all of our constituents, if there was um, a level of information on where you use your very adept um, professional judgment to pull this together for us and bring it up to a strategic um, summary, where uh, you say what I think I'm deducing you're saying in the, the, the comments and buried in some of the, um, of the reports is that things are unfolding as you expected them to, um, although it's early in the year. Um, none of the, none of the fund, um, either income or outgo is um, unexpected. Um, there's no areas for concern, there's no um, controversy. Um, there's nothing um, unexpected occurring. Um, so as, and, and the um, the, I, I would think of them as corrections, the things that were budgeted for one year but didn't get spent for one, for one reason or another. Um, just keep track of them and um, uh, bring them through. I don't have any trouble with that. So do, do you see how, um, how it would just be helpful on, to have a, um, to have your professional assessment?
Yep, uh, thank you for that comment. Um, I will say that um, that we'll, it will take that comment to heart. There'll also be more of that in, in the mid-year report because we're doing the projections and the update of the five-year forecast. So the first quarter report is, is typically not very exciting. Um, if there were things to report, we would absolutely highlight them. Um, but um, yeah, we're waiting to actually get the property and sales tax information and to be able to give a more complete picture of how we envision the fiscal year unfolding going forward. But to date, um, as, as expected.
Well, I, I would just offer for your consideration, if there are so many things outstanding that you really can't tell much from this, why are we doing it? Um, you could just make this a written important saying and, and, and leave it at that, that it's too early to tell and you'll be back um, when we have um, something more meaty um, to um, advise us. Um, so just for your consideration.
Thank you for your question. Oh, Councilmember Kurtz.
I think I'm on the other side. I, I appreciate having the, the information. It's sort of a catch twenty-two because if we get it and then there are surprises, we're going to say, well, how did we get here? So I don't know. I, I appreciate having this. Um, I'm looking at table six on the expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
Can you provide a little bit more on, on the non-depart- departmental line? As it represents the highest amount of the budget? And, and then also for our funds that we're using for the um, the encampment, are those under, where are those represented? Are they represented in the city manager line or are they represented in police? Um, or non-departmental?
Okay. All right, well, the first one on, uh, they're not in the non-departmental. Uh, what the non-departmental is um, is where we have a lot of our, like, our debt service um, and internal service funds and payments that, for instance, are going out for um, employee health benefits or pension payments, et cetera. So we're charging the departments, we're collecting in the internal service. And so the non-departmental really are kind of citywide expenditures that are not tied to a specific department or program. As far as the um, um, funds associated with the city's homeless programs uh, in this fiscal year, they were um, basically reallocated and transferred. They are in the city manager's um, office, um, city manager department line item. Uh, so that, they used to be somewhat embedded with the housing program and community and economic development, and those have been segregated um, for um, not just tracking, but for administration purposes. Um, the lion's share of that is um, in Fund Two Eighty Three. And I would just note that if you um, look at the Fund Two Eighty Three results on table seven and table eight, uh, it not only reflects what was in the original budget, but the council took action um, since the beginning of fiscal year to essentially accept the grant funds um, that's showing up in the revenues and appropriate a portion of those funds. I think to the tune of about, just under three million dollars. It was a, a budget amendment for that purpose uh, this fiscal year.
Would it be possible, or, or would you, would it be, well, thoughts on renaming Two Eighty Three then to identify it specifically as the homeless? Just so if we ever look back at this, that we able, like, where did that come from or what was it for?
Um, we are in the process of considering that. The problem is, is that it includes a number of other grants. So the way that the funds are currently set up, you notice there's public safety grants in Two Eighty One and then all the other grants. And one of the things that we're looking at particularly is we're looking at also the new financial system as being a little bit more um, you know, specific in terms of the different grant funds. Right now, it's, it's sort of a bucket, but the lion's share is the homeless. But we can, we can call that out, uh, at least through the course of this fiscal year to, to add clarity to it.
Yeah.
Just to ask a follow-up question, Councilmember Kurtz, are you looking to have more information about what the city spends on homelessness? And where is all that budgeted? So we're kind of tracking to that, is that the nature of your questions?
The idea is that we're easily able to find it, like all the other um,
Programs.
Programs are actually called out very easily. And I think if we ever say, well, how much did we actually spend towards or receive towards or around homelessness? It'd be nice to be able to easily identify that.
Absolutely. So um, as you know, we created the community services division out of the city manager's office specifically to create a budget and a program and a structure that will be reflected more specifically in that regard in the next budget cycle.
Right.
So I think we have the same goal to be able to, to track and report out on that, on that spend.
Perfect. Thank you. And just back on the non-departmental, this probably has been this way for the last four years that I've looked at it, but I'm not sure. Um, would you ever allocate those back to the departments? With those funds, those expenditures to see if more fully loaded within each department?
Um, I don't know if there's a short answer to that question because i- in, in part, there are expenditures um, reflected in the department. But when we're charging internal service fund costs to departments and then it flows to the internals, you, you don't want to double count them. So we, we separate them out a little bit. So um, maybe pending some follow-up on this question, we can make sure that the um, we're more clear on what's included in the departmental and perhaps provide a little bit more detail on the non-departmental, like transfers are non-departmental. And so they're um, big ticket items that are not specific to, to departments.
It is a big number to have be in there and not have it more pulled out description-wise. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, not seen any other additional questions? There might be some that come up. I'll open up this item to the public. If you'd like to comment on this item, now is your opportunity.
Good evening, City Council. I, Alvataria, I live in Gersil Park. Uh, I'm not sure this is the time to make this kind of analysis, but I'm, I'm wondering with the recent uh, uh, two statements that I heard at the city council, one, it was, it was difficult to find employees because salaries in the government sector was too low. But recently, there's been a number of raises to the employees. And I wonder if you've seen any, if these kinds of report would show you any effect that that was having and whether or not you're having more luck hiring people for the, the many vacant positions that you have. That's really all the question I have.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments on this item? Not seen any, I'll close a public comment. And it's an adjacent, but a good question if you could speak to the question that was just posed.
Uh, yeah, a really good question. Um, so in terms of, you know, where that would um, of this report informs that question, uh, there is a, a table where we're also showing the expenditures by category and it shows that the salaries and benefits um, in the um, recent general fund, which is a vast majority of our personnel costs, is about twenty four percent through the first quarter. And so what we'll be tracking over the course of the fiscal year and through the other reports is, uh, you may recall that over the last several years, we've had significant budgetary savings in our personnel costs because we budget for full staffing, but because of the difficulty in, um, well, because of the vacancies for any number of reasons, we've been experiencing um, um, you know, ten, twelve percent vacancy rates. And you'll hear in the next item that um, when we cover last fiscal year's year-end results, we had about six million dollars in salary savings due to vacant positions. So what we'll be able to report or track in, in this context of this report is the extent to which our actual payroll expenditures are tracking with the budget. Um, we do anticipate um, still having some salary savings, but not to the same level that we've had before. Uh, we've been uh, pretty aggressive in our recruitment and we think that the new contracts will also go a long way towards improving um, retention. Um, but again, we've only, we're only three months through the fiscal year and we'll, we'll highlight that in future reports.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
I'm sorry, I was wondering if I heard the question differently. Was it if we were having with the increases in salaries that we've had, are we seeing that that's helping us close our gaps of hiring? Was that, that was more the, that was the question, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So we have been really lucky to make a number of new hires. So I think those vacancy rates are dropping and we are seeing, we are um, seeing an improvement in our ability to attract um, really high-quality candidates and hire them, which is really exciting. So that is on the upswing, for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Unless council have any additional questions? Not seeing any, I'm, I've, I've closed a public comment. But there's another related financial item, so maybe you can speak on that one. They're very related. Um, I would accept a motion on this item, please.
Can I make a?
Yes, go ahead, make a comment and then make a motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Um, so I think even building on Councilmember Bushy's challenge to the value of this, I am taking in, I'll say, I am seeing two truths here. Because there is not a lot in, in, even I think to your point, Director Navasio, um, that one data point is not going to suggest and that there are the contours of how the year unfolds, given that sales tax and property tax aren't even going to hit until the second. It may have the, 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 certainly through one lens, a, a lack of um, impact to talk about one quarter in. Um, but I think it would be helpful to provide at the front of these, a narration of where we are, what is not there, even just to provide that, that caveat to where funds are going. Because I, I, I do think that there is value in it, but I think it would be helpful to provide that, that narration. This is expected, this is not expected. I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion on that item?
Yes. I move that we accept the fiscal report of, wait, no, um, oh yeah, for fiscal year. Is this my mic?
Here.
Testing.
Thank you. My mic has shorted. I move that we accept the fiscal year twenty twenty four, I move that we accept the fiscal year 2024, 2025 first quarter budget update presenting revenue and expenditure results through the first quarter of the current fiscal year through September 30th, 2024 in Attachment A, and authorize amendments to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget representing unencumbered carryover appropriations for specified purposes totaling $1,080,148 as presented in Attachment B.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. I'm sorry, did you? Hi, thank you. Councilor Vice Mayor Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Hi.
Councilmember Yenens Galati.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor Kate.
Hi, that motion carries 5-0. On a related item, it's the year-end audited financial statements and related audit reports, and it might get at some of that narrative too, as we were talking about. So Director Navazio, I'll turn it over to you. I want to see that Whitney's here, too.
Yes, okay, thanks again. Yeah, so this is a, uh, kind of a meaty, uh, packet in terms of, uh, documents that have been provided, but this agenda item is intended to, um, provide to the council and public the, um, annual comprehensive, uh, financial report. Test, test, test.
Hold on a moment while we deal with the microphone issue. We will just focus our attention on Director Navazio. We will ignore the static, and we were going to keep going. Go ahead.
Hey, testing. Okay, thank you. So, um, this item serves to, uh, transmit to, to the council, the, um, fiscal year 23, 24 annual comprehensive financial report, AKA the audited, uh, financial statements for, uh, the city of San Rafael for the fiscal year ended June 30, 24. There is also a number of, uh, related audit reports, um, that, uh, we will briefly touch on. They are provided, um, via attachment. Again, the first attachment is the annual comprehensive financial report. Accompanying that is also the memorandum of internal controls that our, um, outside auditor will discuss, uh, the required audit communications. Uh, there's a supplemental report specific to the audit of the child development, uh, program. And then finally, the, uh, GAN appropriations, um, review. The, uh, financial results for, um, the fiscal year are summarized in the staff report, and, uh, they're essentially excerpt, excerpt, excerpts from the, uh, management discussion and analysis section of the annual comprehensive financial report, which attempts to, um, as Councilmember Bushy asked, sort of present the, sort of the narrative of what the, the results mean. I think, uh, for purposes of, uh, presentation of this item, I will, um, hand off to, uh, Whitney Crockett from the CPA firm of Maison Associates to present the audit report. And, um, I can come back and highlight some of the, uh, financial highlights, but would rather have the auditor present their report, and then we can dive as deep as the council chooses to. Um, so with that, Whitney, I think you can, uh, hear us, and I am going to, uh, share a screen that will, um, uh, walk through the presentation.
All right. Can you hear me?
We sure can, go ahead.
Okay, awesome. So thank you, Paul, not Paul, I'm sorry, Paul, uh, for, uh, being my co-pilot with the presentation slides. So perfect, we're on the first slide. So again, good evening. My name is Whitney Crockett. Um, I'm an audit partner with Maison Associates, and I oversaw the city of San Rafael's, um, external independent audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. So we are an independent CPA firm, so we're independent from the city of San Rafael and its component units. So what that means is that we're engaged to provide independent verification that the city's financial statements are materially correct and fairly present the financial position of the city's funds. Our audit was also conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the U.S. and government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the U.S. Next slide, please. Okay, so what do we audit? So we audit the city. Um, so that's in Attachment 1 is the annual comprehensive financial report. So that also, um, the city's audit encompasses the component unit of the city, which is San Rafael Sanitation District. So that data and financial, um, information is included in the city's report. Um, we also audit, which is a part of attachment for the city's child development program. And then finally, um, as part of Attachment 5, we report on the city's GAN limit. So we perform an agreed-upon procedures, uh, report, uh, to recalculate the city's, um, approved by council GAN limit each year. Next slide, please. Okay, so, um, results of the audit. So on page one of Attachment 1 is the city's audit opinion, or our audit opinion, our firm's, uh, audit opinion of the city's financial statements. So, um, the city received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide to the city. Um, so that's further discussed in there, but that's the gist of it in page 1. Um, next slide, please. Okay, on page, page 5 of Attachment 1, um, is management's discussion and analysis. And this is prepared by finance staff, and it gives you kind of a overview of what happened during the year, um, and any significant activity changes from prior year to the current year. Next slide, please. Okay, so another deliverable that is a part of your packet, um, specifically Attachment 2, is the memorandum on internal control. And what this is, is a memo from us, the auditor, to city council, which indicates any internal control issues that we encounter during our audit. There are three different categories that we can have, um, in order of the highest level of severity to the lowest level of severity. So, uh, the three categories are material weakness, which is very high level of severity, and then significant deficiency is below that. And then the lowest level of severity are other matters. So for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, we had one other matter related to the purchasing policy compliance and clarification of requirements. And this is an item that has been on the memo since 2022. And basically, what the recommendation from us was for, um, is for the city to clarify requirements for the use of purchase orders and contracts, and, um, to review those processes to ensure that requirements are being met. And the current status of this item is also, um, documented in that attachment. But the gist of it is that, um, the, although the city has issued, um, updated purchasing guidelines, the guidelines are not effective until July 1st, 2024. So technically, that covers fiscal year 2025. And therefore, we can't say at June 30, 2024, it was corrected, um, because that's outside of the scope of our audit, one day out of the scope. Um, so our plan is, um, for fiscal years, fiscal years, uh, 2025, um, and going forward, we're going to test those new guidelines against actual transactions to make sure that those, um, are being adhered to. And so we'll report back next year on the memorandum to make sure that those have been addressed, those comments. Um, and then also, there were prior year issues, if you read through the memorandum, um, about building permit charges that the city, um, corrected during fiscal year 24. Um, so the schedule of prior year significant deficiencies, which is towards the back of the memorandum on internal control, that outlines the current year status for those items. Um, and those comments were dated back to 2021. So the city corrected those in fiscal year 2024, which is great. Um, and we tested those, the new master fee schedule against current year transactions to make sure they were, uh, matching the fees charged. Next slide, please. Okay, attachment number three is the required communications. And these are communications from us, um, about certain audit matters. Um, so if you read through it, you'll see that there are no changes in accounting policies other than there was a new governmental accounting standard, um, in fiscal year 24, which is GASB 100. However, it did not apply, and it had no impact to the city. Um, so it's just mentioned there. Um, there were no unusual transactions. Um, in there, we do outline significant accounting estimates. And the reason why we highlight those in that document is because actual results may vary from the estimates at year end. So we like to point those out, um, at least the ones that are significant. And then, um, there were no disagreements with management. And then we did not have any material adjustments or misstatements to report to you. Um, finally, on Attachment 5 is the GAN limit agreed-upon procedures report. And like I mentioned earlier, uh, we recalculated the GAN limit to the city's worksheets and Department of Finance reports. And we agree with the limit that was adopted by city council, so we didn't have any exceptions to note in there. Next slide, please. Okay, attachment 4 is the city's childcare, um, basic financial statements. So if you read through that, the first page is where we have our, um, opinion. And again, on the childcare opinion, we have an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that the child program can, child development program can have. And then on page 27 of that report is where we have our compliance opinion. Um, and that's where we would outline any compliance, um, internal control matters. Uh, we didn't have any, so it's just very standard language, no compliance findings noted. Yeah, so I guess next slide is the question slide. Uh, but before we go to questions, I just wanted to take a moment to thank, uh, the city's finance team, so Paul and Sean and their team for getting us everything that we needed and for being super helpful during the audit. Any questions?
Thank you, Whitney. I'll see if there are any questions. Not seen any from the dais, but do hang on, because there might be some that come from the public. So do hang on, but I'll turn it back over to the director.
Yeah, um, thank you. Uh, yep, a lot of work goes into that. Um, happy to report that the, the audit went smoothly. I'll just take a moment to maybe highlight some of the key financial, uh, results through the end of fiscal year. Again, they're summarized in the, um, both in the, um, memo, uh, staff report as it covered the item, and mostly described in the management discussion and analysis. But, um, this, um, the city, uh, ended, uh, the fiscal year with, um, total net position of, uh, $310 million, um, which is essentially the assets exceeding the liabilities. Um, that's actually represented an increase of $29 million from the prior year, um, across all funds. Um, there's an explanation to that in terms of the, uh, capital assets, some changes in also the liabilities related to pension and OPEB. Uh, we also had a significant impact that's also seen in the general fund related to the, um, valuation of the city's investments when we're making adjustments for, um, market adjustments to, to the portfolio, and those are reflected in our, um, in our assets. The, the general fund, which we spend a lot of time focusing on, um, actually ended, uh, the fiscal year with a, um, we increase of, um, excuse me, overall fund balance of 36.4 million. That's an increase of 8.6 million over the prior fiscal year. It's a combination of, uh, the revenues, um, exceeding, uh, the budget and, um, as well as the expenditures, as we noted earlier, coming in, um, about $6 million under budget largely, again, due to the, um, uh, salary savings. We also have incorporated, uh, in the, uh, fund balance, and I would just want to see if I can turn to the page so I don't misrepresent the numbers, where in our, uh, general ending fund balance, we're also reflecting, um, council action with the budget, where we increase the reserve from a 10% to a 15% level. So that results in, um, just over about $9 million in a, um, sort of committed reserve, which is the 10% for emergency reserves, as well as a, about $5 million in reserve, which still shows as, um, unassigned, because that's for more of the economic uncertainties. And as was discussed with the finance committee, um, don't pretend to be an expert on GAAP and GASB, but because that portion of the reserve is really available to support operations, it shows up in a different category of the fund balance. But, um, generally speaking, I would say the results came in, um, pretty much in line with what we had reported, um, during the budget process into the fourth quarter. And, um, happy that the audit, um, did not yield any significant adjustments to what we were expecting and what was reported. As, I'll end by, um, simply saying that, um, as part of the general fund, uh, reserve policy that the council updated, not only did the, um, um, council change the reserve from 10 to 15%, but we also included in that reserve part, uh, policy, specific language that, um, details out in general terms the priority for use of funds that exceed the reserve policy, um, requirement. So that's our deferred maintenance, future capital needs, um, ensuring that we have all of our, um, liabilities, workers' comp claims, um, adequately funded. And so, uh, during the course of the year, and hopefully not until the budget process, we will be back in front of the council, uh, for discussion about, um, allocating, uh, some of those funds for, to meet the needs consistent with the, um, direction in the reserve policy. Okay? So with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So I, I had promised that we would talk about our bond ratings. So Director Navazio, if you'd be able to comment on what, what, what did we achieve? And what, why is that significant?
Thank you. So, um, again, uh, City Manager Ilivich mentioned this at the, at the last meeting, but we had a little bit more, uh, discussion at the finance subcommittee. So just as a reminder, um, uh, Fitch Rating Agency completed their annual review of the, their credit, um, assessment of the city of San Rafael, uh, in the last couple of weeks. And as a result of that, the city's, um, credit rating was upgraded from, um, AA to AA plus in terms of our overall, uh, general, uh, credit worthiness, which, um, is an upgrade. And in addition, they rated, uh, they reviewed the city's existing, uh, debt, which was lease revenue bonds that were issued in connection with the essential facilities and the construction of facilities. And that, um, bond was, um, upgraded from AA minus to AA, slightly below the general rating, because that's, um, secured specifically by the, uh, sales tax that we collect for that purpose as opposed to the general, um, taxing ability and financial position of, of the city. It's always nice to get a, um, you know, positive, uh, favorable rating upgrade, particularly given the last several years of, uh, uncertainty and volun- volatility, both with the city and the general economic. Um, what it means, uh, going forward is, is the, um, basically, the city's cost of borrowing funding is going to be slightly less. Um, there was a question from the finance committee about whether we can quantify that, and I'm still a little bit hard pressed to, you know, put a dollar in terms of what that means. But, um, let's just say that we are in a better position now to attract investors and be able to, um, should the need arise, borrow funds, um, at a slightly lower interest rate, uh, than, than previously. Um, and I think it's worth also noting, and City Manager noted this in her comment, that, um, the sort of narrative that was issued with the credit rating upgrades spoke both to the city's financial position, but also the strength of our, uh, local city economy in terms of diversification tax base and, um, our ability, knock on wood, to sort of weather, um, some of the economic cycles that inevitably arise.
Thank you. If I could read back what I heard, which is that it wouldn't amend any of our existing debt service, but debt service we might contemplate in the future unless we were to do a refi. Uh, I don't know what the equivalent of a refi on debt service is in the, in, uh, public finance, but that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, from the city's perspective, I think the only impact, and I've got to be careful that I don't overreach on this, is in terms of because our existing bonds are, you know, bonds sold on the market, that the price of those bonds, value of those bonds will change. So investors will look at where they can benefit from either more security and different yield on, on that. But that's just in the secondary bond market.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do you have a question?
No.
No, I'm going to invite the public to speak and then we will get to comments. So if you're interested in commenting on this item, I'll open the public comment. And you're invited, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in. So we're looking at the year-end audited financial statements and the audit reports. Yes, Mr. Vatari.
I love to listen to these meetings. You always learn a lot. And I think in the presentation earlier, there was this unencumbered funds, I think you called it, where there were a number of purchase orders that were made at the end. There were a number of purchase orders not made at the end of the year that carry over into this year. And then I hear here, there's a, one of the action items on this report was an analysis, no, a modification to the purchase order process to see if it would, would help. Am I tying two things together successfully? Because it sounds like they're related. In one case, you had, didn't, forgive me here, I'm fumbling, did not put in a purchase order for a little over $1 million. And there's an outstanding item talking about purchase order processing and how it needs to change. So I'm just think those two things are related. So I just wanted to ask if that was the case.
Thank you. We'll have staff clarify.
John Reynolds, I live in the Canal area, 204 Larkspur Street. I've been in Maui for four months. My sister has Alzheimer's and I'm filling in a little bit for that. So I'm here in Maui and I'm back here to look at my condominium and to, and the board of the condominium complex and that kind of thing. My comment was really related to the previous item. But I just want to mention, it's just quickly, I appreciate, I saw in the paper, the tents or the encampment. I know that's part of the financing for the encampments and providing amenities, you know, showers and food and cleanup and all kinds of facilities for those people until they actually got places to, to live. And it relates to Maui. They've had the Lahaina fire and a lot of people are struggling with that. But also that the homeless population, they could use the model, I think, that San Rafael is, is developing now to take care of people who are unsheltered and, and getting tiny homes, possibly. Other possibilities, other shelters to, to help these people and the, and the social services, the counselors, to meet with them and move them forward towards that possibility. So I appreciate the model that San Rafael has provided and it should be developed in other places. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not seen anyone. I'll close the public comment with additional questions, but I know there's some comments that would like to be made. I'll start with Councilmember Bushy. Go ahead.
Congratulations. This is, this is a great presentation of two things. Two external sources have reviewed our materials and found that we're doing a fantastic job, both the auditors and the Fitch upgrade people. That takes, that's not a one-day event. That takes a year of every day, paying attention to the details, thinking it through to be consistent with our vision, to implement our new reserve policy and, and an eye on all of these different things. So I think this is just absolutely phenomenal that we are getting, your team is getting this great feedback. This is what we expect at San Rafael and what makes us proud and makes it easy for us to, well, easier for us to serve in this capacity. So thank you for this great work and congratulations to your entire team.
Thank you. That was literally the notes that I just wrote, just so you know. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to add? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I echo Councilmember Bush's comments, but I'm going to add one more, which is that this position did not happen necessarily all due to the seated council. This is the act of previous councils. This is the act of previous staff. This is the act of something that's taken, I would say, decades in the making. As Director Navazio pointed out, this is everything to do with the economic engine across San Rafael, downtown, east San Rafael, our industrial and auto. There, these are sectors that keep this city running, period. So we have a lot of people to thank that are not in this room for this result. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I request a motion, I'll just add, so thank you, Director Navazio. Thank you to Sean and to Vaughn. Thank you, Whitney, for the review that you've done. And the takeaway?
I'm sorry. I think Mr. Venetieri's question didn't get answered yet.
Oh, thank you. We are running along. Yes, the question about purchase orders and the unencumbered, whether it were related.
Thank you again for the question.
Thank you. We're so excited to give compliments. Apologize.
Thank you. We'll get back to that in a minute. No, they, they are related. They are related, but they, they are just slightly different. And I think what I'll, and what I will say is the, what the audit finding was going back to 2022 was actual transactions that were occurring. And the city historically has been inconsistent in when we require purchase orders, when we recover, require contracts, so that invoices might show up for payment. But we don't have the documentation of the approval and authorizations. There's always budget available for it, but we need, you know, we, we now have a policy of requiring purchase orders for any expenditure exceeding $10,000. And we're in the process of implementing that so that there's a full kind of audit trail, if you will, not for, for that transaction. The unencumbered carryover requests result not because a purchase order wasn't there for a transaction, but that the transaction like never happened. So it's, 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 it's related. So with the action that the council took and the appropriation, supplemental appropriations, those will all be immediately encumbered with purchase order and the contracts for which they were intended. So they, they are related, but they're not the same thing. That, if that helps, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clear explanation. We'll get back to the compliments before we get the motion. And really, the one takeaway, what has already been said by Councilmember Bush and Vice Mayor Hill, is that we're in a very strong fiscal position. And we are incredibly grateful to staff and to the entire, all, all the departments that have worked to make that, to make that so. So not all jurisdictions in Marin County can say that.
Yeah, no, I was just, thank you. But I also want to note the leadership of the city manager, city manager's office and the council, because being disciplined in how we manage the city's reporting on them and tracking them is one thing, but being disciplined and intentional and also looking not just at today, but planning for the future is an important part of the role that we all take. And so I just wanted to appreciate that as well.
Thank you. I request a motion on this item, please.
I'll make a motion. Except the fiscal year 2023, '24 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Memorandum on Internal Control, Report of Required Communications, Child Development Program Financial Report and GAN Appropriations Limit Report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Again, thank you to all. Thank you, Whitney. We have one more item before we adjourn, and that is open time for public expression. This is any comments from the public on topics that we didn't already discuss. Actually, we'd be willing to hear that too as well, basically on anything.
Just another, John Reynolds again, just another thing. And I haven't seen it, but maybe it's already on the schedule when you're going to act on the recommendation from the Planning Commission about Northgate Mall, the new plan for them. I guess you're in the process of bringing that up to the city council at some point. I just, I'm just reminding you and reminding myself that we need to look at that. I mean, the MOC was looking towards when that would happen, because we want to show up to support Northgate Mall, the Planning Commission recommendation. So I'm just putting that forward.
Thank you. And I'll have the city manager report, because those dates are already calendared. It's already happened at the Planning Commission. City Council is on December 2nd. December 2nd, okay. Anyone else have anything else? Any other public comment this evening?
Albatery Gersel Park. I bike every morning at 6:30 and I am very aware of the condition of the roads. And I noticed that a number of the roads have been slurried. I think they call it slurried. But I did see a number of the finished products had gaps and gouges in it. And I didn't know if the city needed to know that or if they send an inspector around to see the quality of the work that's, that you're paying for. Because I am noticing some areas where it could be a lot better. It's not affecting the biking, but it, you know, over time with the rains, it's probably going to create some issues. One, and our, yes, we're aware of this.
Go ahead and finish your comments.
Sorry. Sonic is tearing up the streets. Sonic, the carrier. So I noticed quite a few places where you'll be walking or biking around and there's just big holes in the ground. And so, I don't know, sure you're aware of that, but it's, it seems to me that's a problem. That's still my comments.
Thank you. So we utilize See Click Fix to report anything that you see on our street. So go to the San Rafael landing page, do report a problem, and that would be the best place. You can take a photo and give the exact location of anything that you might see. Anything else? All right, not seeing any other. I will close the public comment. We wish everybody an enjoyable Thanksgiving and this meeting is adjourned.